They wanted to finish. So, basically, people got held up. It wasn't a good... Wasn't good for the whole team. But it was just like ripping a Band-Aid off. There's nothing you could do. They just had to get it done. That last two hundred feet of road. Which they did. So, uh... Had a meeting after that. Talked with them. Darryl was there. Um, it was, you know, I'd say a little forceful. Basically...
Made your point, though.
I made some points. Um... Signs went up immediately. Detours now, you can now see lots of extra signage. Um, now, if you get stuck, then you didn't read the signs. Because we put up a lot more detour signs. Um... And, uh, so I think it's, it's much better. Much better now. They're progressing along. Uh, the, uh, the, the fast setting concrete they're using, they're paying extra for, is not setting fast. So, they're not happy.
Even with the hot weather?
Even with the hot weather, it's not, it's taking longer than it should. So, they're unhappy. They're trying to figure out what's going on with their fast setting concrete. That's setting average. Uh, but that's their issue. We don't pay for that. They do. Uh... The, uh, Melody has formed up. Melody's supposed to be poured tomorrow. Whether it'll pour half of it or all of it, I'm not sure. It'll try and pour as much as they can. But Melody should be done tomorrow. Um, except for the intersection. They'll leave out the intersection. Uh, then it'll be probably ten days before that will open up. Then they'll do the other side. I've talked with them about, uh, in order to expedite the, uh, the plan, one of the things we've looked at doing is, uh, they're going to close Melo... They're gonna close High Ridge between Green Meadow and Lake Crest. They're gonna close this whole stretch. And what we're gonna do is, we're gonna concrete Green Meadow next. The Green Meadow will be concrete. And then everyone south of Melody will just detour around the block. So, you're gonna go up to Green Meadow, down Green Meadow, Shoreline, Lake Crest, and how do you go? You're just gonna go around the block. Because they're not allowed to have flagmen on High Ridge. High Ridge is, is not allowed. It's too much of an important road. They're not allowed to close to one lane. Contract specifies High Ridge has to have four lanes at all times. Two lanes have to be travel lanes twenty-four seven. So, when they're working on one, they park in the other. So, you can't do it like Melody right now where one lane's open, it's not allowed on High Ridge. So, they've gotta come up with a plan to get between Melody and Green Meadow. They've gotta put in two bypass lanes. But once you get to Green Meadow, I told them, "That's good." Then we'll just detour around. And then whip out Hi-Ridge. You go and blow, right? Now, we'll get them back on schedule.
Those are all High Ridge?
They're well on High Ridge, yes. Now, the other thing I told them is, they can stockpile the dirt on High Ridge over here across from City Hall. Because we don't want them taking their cement, their, their dump trucks full of dirt back down Green Meadow or downhillside or... We don't want their cement truck, their, 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 you know, dump trucks going back to the sewer plant to put it on the big mound. If they put it here for us, there's two things. One is, we're gonna use some of it for a ball field. The other thing is, they ultimately have to fix the yard. The operations yard over here, they've gotta resubset for, for land plant. So, they gotta go back and regrade that. You know what I'm saying? So, they, they, you know, had to remember, they've gotta make that mound grassy. So, that's a good, I think, a good way to keep them off of the new concrete. And they can just tear this stuff out, and they can just dump it here. And it's good for everybody. So, that's what I proposed. Then we'll find out on Monday if they're gonna, they're gonna follow my lead and, you know, and approve that plan. But double-laning kind of High Ridge is, should get them back on schedule. They're behind, obviously, with the weather.
When they pour Melody tomorrow, where are they meeting us? Because they can't work on the other side of Melody.
They're trying to work out. Because they've gotta wait about ten days before they can even, before ten to twelve days before they can open it up for traffic. Um...
And that's supposed to start around the period?
As what?
That's...
That's supposed to be, uh, Tuesday of this week. Which means no. Yeah. It's imminent. They're doing great work now. It's imminent. To come in, um, so... You know, they're, they're behind, but they're, they're trying to catch up. I mean, they're not behind to the extent that we would ever penalize them. No, they're, 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 they're working. They're not off somewhere else working another job and leaving us hanging for a week. They're not here every day that they can be. Um, so I'm, I'm happy with, with the progress. I'm happy with the, with the quality of the work I see. It seems to be, it's been really good. Uh, I've got no complaints from anybody. Everybody's been a real trooper in this last phase. Um, so... Yeah, it's going along according to plan. So... So, uh, alright. So, that's the roads. On the, on the, uh, town financial updates, there's a couple things here. First thing we just started with is the, uh, the 2021... Everybody should have a copy of this. It's 2021, uh, budget. I'm not gonna go through this whole thing. I just wanna give you a couple highlights here. So, typically, what we would do is, around April, we would go over the budget. Budget versus actions. Because we're at the midway mark. So, March is the end of that six-month period. Uh... We didn't really, uh, I didn't jump in and do it earlier because we were kinda waiting on some things to break out with the roads, to get the final, uh, that way it goes. But we typically do a mid-year correction. We see, "Where are we? How are we doing?" And I'm like, "Do we need to make any adjustments?" We typically do that at mid-year. And again, we're not gonna be here next month. So, that would be the normal time we do it. So, I wanna do it now. Just a brief overview here. So, as you can see on this first page, this is kind of the summary page. Property taxes were about, uh, we've gotten about ninety percent of our property taxes. About ten percent are dilapid right now. That's par for the course. We'll get all of that money. We get a hundred percent collections. Uh, right now, they are, as of March one, there's a nine percent penalty in interest. So, we actually get more than a hundred percent. Each month, it goes up by two percent. When it gets to July, the penalty's fifty percent. Usually, we don't get to July. People will pay by then. Uh, so, we're actually gonna end up collecting more than a hundred percent of that. Everything looks pretty good. The one line I would draw your attention to is sales tax. So, we're five months into the year. And we're already at twenty-seven thousand out of our forty thousand dollar budget. We haven't reached the midway point yet. So, sales tax is cranking again. Which is good. Sales tax is about thirty percent for us and the MDD, Linda. So, the MDD is, is up thirty percent on their sales tax as well. So, um... Sales tax is doing great. It's the great budget pillar, right there. Um, everything else looks according to plan. Um, you know, all looks pretty good here. The, uh, as far as expenditures go, you can see year-to-date, we've spent about a hundred and thirty-five thousand running the city. Of that, a couple things are front-loaded. We paid the entire fire and AMS bill. About thirty-five thousand. Paid that already. We've already paid the, uh, the, the auditor. So, between those two, that's about fifty thousand dollars. Which is front-loaded. So, if you cut that in half, and, because we're halfway through the year, if you subtract twenty-five from that, we'd be about a hundred and ten. Which is halfway in our two-twenty. So, you know what I'm saying? So, ballparking it, about halfway through the year, we're right on track. Okay? So, as far as our expenses go, we're tracking right on, right on the budget. Um... As you see, for the budget, we capital out the expenditure three seventy-five. That's the gap. Right? That's the road gap. But we haven't hit the gap yet. We still have money in the bank. So, at the end of the year, that gap will show up down there at the bottom. Okay? But, um, everything else looks pretty good on, on the summary here. There's nothing, nothing really noteworthy. If you look at the general fund revenue sheet, those are just the individual line items. Again, everything looks pretty good here. On building permits, we budgeted thirty thousand for the year. We're at twenty-five thousand now. So, we're gonna be doing significantly more. I've already seen plans for two more houses. So, we're gonna blow through that line item on the new houses. Um... Everything else is, is tracking pretty well. Interest, obviously, we've got a lot of money in the bank. Our interest is doing well. Um... The, uh, MDD has donated twelve thousand for our bonds. That's down there at the bottom. So, you can see, uh, expenses look, uh, pretty normal. I'm sorry, revenues look pretty good. Revenues, you know, we projected we would have six twenty-five for the year. We're at five fifty now. We're at the five-month mark. So, we're gonna easily exceed our revenue budgets. Okay? Okay, on expenses, uh, these are the areas of line, you know, one line item will be high, one line item will be low. They're kind of all over the place. Um, most of them, obviously, are low. The first one, you see office supplies. The reason why that number is bigger is because we made a strategic, um, change in the office. We took our utility computer. We bought another one. And it's the same brand as our City One. We have the two identical printers. Well, it used to be a different printer, so the toner was different. So, when you order toner, you knew which one it was. Well, we have, we have the same toner packages now. And that's about two-thirds of this budget is toner. Uh, we've been charging it to the city because that was the toner brand. Well, we need to, that's our mistake. We need to start changing the utility fund, like every alternating. You know, if you know what I mean? Because now we use the same toner for everything across the board. So, that's why I don't want you to, you know, that one line item, very first one, she's a little high. But that's, that's our stuff. If you look at the utility fund, which isn't here, it's like a zero. Okay? So, that's kind of what's going on there. But you gotta see everything here, tracking. Um, on payroll, you see, we're right on the money. Our payroll is seventy-seven thousand. Um, so, we see that here is thirty-six thousand. So, that's right on the money. And remember, our payroll, we have five employees. We have Linda. We have Summer. We have three building inspectors. So, when we talk about, you know, overall payroll, there's five people. So, you can't just look at one line and then think that, you know, the whole thing is typically about one person. That's... Then you're, you're ignorant. You don't know how to read financials. So... But that's kind of what that is. Um... Everything else looks pretty good. All the numbers are fine to me. Uh... Alright. Any questions kind of on this stuff here? Again, down on the bottom there, you'll see under expenses, it says capital improvement roads, three seventy-five. That's the gap. Right? Obviously, we haven't spent any money in the gap yet. Um... And we made our bond payments. We made the principal payment. We made a hundred and forty thousand. Eighty-six thousand we go on the bond payment. Okay? But this is the general fund. Utility fund is doing great. I didn't hurt the utility fund. We're worried about, we wanna make sure the city is good, um, on this. Now, the next thing we have is there's two sheets of paper next. Um... The, uh... So, the first sheet here deals with the, uh, our current cash balances. So, our general fund reserve, we, it's gone up since last month. We have six hundred and sixty-six thousand in the general fund reserve. We now have four seventy-eight is our road gap. But again, we have the big change order coming. So, that road gap will be four hundred, I believe, four hundred or less in the road gap. And we have six hundred and fifty-six thousand in reserve. So, I think we're good there. We've got twenty-six thousand, almost twenty-seven thousand sitting in our uh, general fund right now, just our regular operating account. So, we're good there. Our utility fund's got thirty-five thousand in their checking account, two hundred and thirty-three thousand in reserve. Um, and we haven't hit the, the summer yet. So, we're gonna end up with three hundred thousand plus in utility fund reserve by the end of this year. So, that looks good. And of course, the MDD is sitting on almost fifty thousand dollars, and they're making money. Uh, this is the first one we've integrated in the last resort system. It's the first month they're integrated in. So, that's gonna double their, their water revenues in the water plant. So, that looks good there. They took a pretty significant hit during the, uh, ice storm. Uh, because there was twenty-four seven monitoring. So, they're liable to get a big chunk back under the federal disaster area declaration. Um, but they actually spent more than the city did, uh, keep, keeping that system running, which was really terrific. The fact that, you know, bond court was out for almost three days. So, we kept the water system running the whole time. So, I think that was, that was a really big effort on the part of Sam and everybody else keeping that running. So, you can see, we have a little over a million dollars to cover our road gap of about four hundred thousand. So, item, you know, as far as the road gap goes, that item, I think we're... I'm not worried. I think we're there. Um... So, that's good on the gap. Second item that we have to deal, so we have two big issues that, you know, we wanted to plan for this year. Second big issue is the fact that we're not to make an oversized bond payment. We've got two, right? So, we made the first one back in January. That has all the principal in it. Pay all the principal at the beginning of the year, you pay the interest in the back of the year. So, we have another payment coming due, it's eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-six. That's due August first. Right now, in our debt servicing fund, we've got forty-two thousand and change. Remember, people are, haven't paid us taxes yet. So, there's twenty-two thousand outstanding that we'll get before the end of, before July one. So, everybody, nobody wants to get that fifty percent penalty. We'll collect more than that. That's if everybody pays this month. If you delay another month, it's another two percent penalty on top of that. So... If we're near twenty-two thousand, we should have that by July, and our payment's in August. So, that means the debt servicing will have about sixty, just under sixty-five thousand in it. Which means they're twenty thousand short. Which we knew that. We know that we have to augment the, the debt servicing fund. So, our tax account today, we already have twenty-two thousand in there. We're over twenty-eight thousand. So, by the time we get to August first, we'll have at least another fifty thousand in our tax fund. So, that will easily cover the twenty thousand that we're short. We have the twenty thousand already, right now, sitting there. So, we, we clearly have, without even going back to the first sheet, our reserves and everything, the tax and the debt servicing fund right now have got that covered. So, we'll easily make our next bond payment. Okay? So, we'll make the bonds, get the gap covered, and then all that, we roll along. Next year, it'll kind of be back to a little bit more normal. Okay? Any questions on the funding yet? Two more bond payments on the personal fund. Three. Which, if things go well next year, I may bring to you next year, um, the opportunity to sort of pay off another year. We may double down on the old bond payment, um, to get that out of here. It kind of depends on where we end this year on the, with the gap. You know, if that, that's a hundred thousand dollar change order. We get that gap down, you know, three seventy-five, we end up with seven hundred thousand. We end this year with three hundred thousand plus, you know, in our reserves. Starting next year, where we have a two hundred thousand dollar surplus, this budget is starting there anyway, I'm saying, that's enough budget surplus to actually make another bond payment. Right? And then the reserve just kind of stays at three hundred thousand. You know what I mean? So, I think next year, with all the new houses, we had eleven new houses last year. Right? So, if those eleven, actually, it's a tax law. You know? Those eleven, they ain't tiny. They're all, you know... They're big houses that, you know, just our organic growth is going to add significantly to our tax base. Um... So, I really think there's a strong possibility we'll, we'll double, double pay that next bond payment. We'll get that out of here. Uh... Which will get us closer down the road. Good? Okay. So, we're looking real good. A little excited. Any questions? Anybody? Okay. I don't see any reason to amend the budget. I think we're gonna be over on all the revenue items. I think the expenses were right in line. We're tracking right, right where we should be. I don't think anything's gonna be over for any material amount, uh, uh, on that one. Okay? Um, alright. So, discussion of the town utility system. So, we had to take the, uh, the, the tanks offline earlier this week. They have been worked on. They've been repaired. They're back online. Um, nobody even noticed. Um... So, they are back, the fiber loss tanks were taken offline. They're re-glass on the bottom. We didn't both tank at the same time. We have now manways in. We put new access panels. We kind of, uh, sanded the inside, re-glassed the seams, drilled through the seams, uh, did some additional plumbing work. And, uh, moved the controls. Now, we're back in the fiber loss tanks. We're back to filling all the way. So, we are back in, uh, ready for summer. We're not gonna touch the tanks again. We don't do any more work on the, on the system. All three wells are on and running. Uh, we're doing well. The wells are putting out over twenty gallons a minute. They are prime. We are ready to go for summer. Wells are doing just like they do every year, but now they're really putting out a lot of water.
Doing well?
They're doing well. The wells are doing well. Uh, the tanks are great. The wells are well. Um... Pumps are pumping. We are, uh, rocking and rolling. Uh, as far as, uh, last resorts and Rocket Point go, they are doing well. The, uh, we had a tank issue over there where we had a mechanical failure because of the power outage. We had a power outage, uh, about a week ago. We just flickered. We went off and on here, but Armco was off for almost a day. We had to run over and run the emergency generators again. Which we did. We ran those, um, and kept them in water until Armco came on with power. Uh, which is good, because we have about a three-day supply in the tank. So, it's not like, you know, if they lose power for twenty-four hours, it's going to be tragic. But we needed to go over there and make sure the pressure pumps ran. It wasn't running out of water. It was actually the pressure dropping that we were concerned about, which didn't happen. Uh... But one, one interesting item that happened is because of the power outage, it glitched when the wells were running. So, what happened is, when the power came back on a day later, the well controller had the wells, didn't know the wells were running. So, it, uh, didn't tell them to turn off, because it didn't know they were running when the power went off. So, we tested out the overflow vent on the top of the tank. And it successfully worked. Um, and we pumped water out the top of the tank.
How long did that go on?
That went on for about an hour, and we got an assistant called. And said, "Hey, your tank is leaking." Which caused me to go about forty, fifty miles an hour to get there, and, uh, Sam went out there. To get there, but I know where the blow-off valve is, so I knew immediately it was the blow-off valve. So, I was able to kill the bugs. But, uh, it was kind of a funny story. You know, if all the time, if a, if a well is spilling out water, you want it to be the overflow valve. That's a good one to be. Uh, so, it was kind of a funny story, but, uh, but we fixed it. It's running perfectly well now. But yeah, utilities, we are in great shape. One other thing that we're doing, uh, before our next meeting, we are laying a conduit underneath the road on High Ridge because of the force made from land plant. We know they gotta get their sewage to our sewer plant. So, we're gonna put up about a twelve-inch sleeve under the street at Parkwood for the, uh, for the sewer line you go through to get to the plant. So, we're gonna put that in now on the street. While we're at it, we're going to throw in there probably a ten-inch uh, purple pipe. So, we're gonna dig another trench for a purple pipe, which is the recycled water. So, we've gotta get a sleeve under the street, you know, I, you know, where the recycled water is, you know, that's obviously a priority number nine hundred and two right now. But I wanna get it sleeved because we're not gonna bore under our new streets. So, we're gonna sleeve them up now. So, you may, may see us digging across High Ridge.
Can we come up on that?
Yes, we're gonna sleeve them now. And we'll, we'll figure it out later. Uh... But that's kind of the last of the utility improvements we're gonna do. We're working on the lift station. Uh, the valves go in this week. We've had to raise that lift station about five feet because we raised the road five feet. Uh, so, we're, we're working on that now. That's a pretty extensive, uh, repair to add new steel pipes, new steel. The guts have to be redone. You can't add the piping. You, you have to redo the hole inside. But we're doing it new. And so, it's good. It's actually, you know, a good thing. And, uh, and we're adding a third capacity more. We added five more feet to the thing. So, now it's even bigger. But that's going well. That should be going on this week. Uh...
The sewer plant?
That's, oh, oh, that's the lift station on High Ridge. Uh, right across from, uh, from Woodcrest. So, we're gonna keep that detour up, and we're gonna move those fences around, because we need to work in that intersection, um, close to the lift station. So, there's still gonna be barricades up protecting the guys because they need to get equipment in there to work on the lift station. And maybe the access panel. And maybe the access panel, um, it's a lot of, there's, there's a work there. But that's it. After that's done, basically, we've done all of the road-related work we're going to do for our side. Someone asked me about, uh, putting back up a couple of the streetlights that we took down. We took them down, um, under the impression, they're not dark skies. They were in the way of the road. So we took them out rather than having them. And one of our change orders, it was like $4,000 to take those out and move them and reinstall them electronically. And we just had us take them out. So I'm under the, although the big plan was when land plan came in, whatever style they use, which is dark skies, we just piggyback on that. So I am inclined not to try and put back the handful of poles which we took out. Uh, but we can revisit that if we're still having this conversation six months from now and it looks like, you know, land plan isn't coming, then we might re-discuss that to say, hey, you know, do we want to put them back or just leave them out permanently? But just to give you a heads up right now, I've had some people ask me and I told them, we're not putting them back. Not, not right now. Okay? That's about all I got. Is there any, do you have any questions or, you know, everything? Because you're in the big intersection, so that's, that's all paid, right? Kerry's done?
All paid.
All paid, okay. I still think you have to come back and do rip route for the pipe, right?
I imagine, yes.
Okay, so there's still some.
I'm on the dirt too. Okay, I think they're using it to the side of the street.
Okay.
But then I saw them bringing more in. Yeah, I think they're, they're afraid of it now, so they're using that dirt to bring.
Okay. Um, okay. Any more questions? Any questions about the road? All right. Any questions?
When they, uh, when they start high ridge, is that an ideal situation where there's perfect weather? How long are they forecasting?
What was your question? What was this person asking?
This question, I was asking when they start high ridge, what's kind of the forecast duration? And right now it's thinking about 10 days for a lane to cure that you can drive down.
Are they going to do both lanes at the same time, right?
Uh, that's a question because the question becomes, do they, the machine won't do two lanes wide.
Okay. But they could do one lane and turn around do the other, right?
The question becomes if they drive on the shoulder, then they can do the other lane. They don't have to wait for the other lane to cure.
Right.
To get on it because the, 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 the left side has no houses on it. So they can just go right down the edge of the road. So that's why I think we'll get the benefit of the doubt there. We won't have to wait for 10 days for one lane to cure. Um, you know, they just hop over the other side. That would be mine. And it requires them to be thoughtful enough to plan to do one side on this side first.
That's why we're doing the detours, so they can do them one right after the other, right?
Right. But if they don't do it right, they got to pour the lane that has houses along it first.
Right.
If they start alongside, they gain nothing.
Yeah, they can't get all their equipment on people's cars.
Yeah, they can't run down the other, exactly.
Is the warmer weather going to help secure that?
It will. Right now it's unusual that it's still taking 10 days or so for it to reach the full 4,000, ready to go down. So I think it'll be a month. I think it'll be about a month enough to do high ridge once we start. And that's assuming that they don't know what they're doing. If they know what they're doing and they optimize it, I think it might be three weeks or so. It'll be faster.
It could be fast. So are we, is.
It's just the earth, excavation.
Monday, the next road meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, do we need to bring that up with them and say, do you have a plan?
Yeah.
We're thinking about it and this is what we want you to do.
Yeah.
I think that's because, because I think, I think people are going to ask, right? Because you're going to see increased traffic on the streets.
Yeah.
All, all the people getting traffic around their places or we got to help them while we're doing it and if it's. The longer it can.
The, the thing that will be educating everybody in, in this side of the original side of town that those yield signs, we need to pay attention now. Those intersections are going to be real now. Because, you know, you probably just don't even look. I mean, if I went down to the 400 block, you know, it's a no-brainer.
Yeah, you're going to see there and you can see, they do need to start paying attention.
So there's going to be an education campaign. There'll be detour signs. Right? Because obviously if you're coming down, you know, like Linda, when you leave your house, you won't be able to get on high ridge. You're going to have to, you're going to see a big barricade with no access. Similar to the 400 block, they're going to see detour signs telling them, go down shoreline because you can't go straight. So I think it'll be okay. There'll be a lot more signs. But yeah.
Hopefully people remember to slow down to, right? So this is, don't get a big worry here, it's going to be.
Yeah, so I think we're going to, we're going to signage. We'll do lots of signage.
Yeah, people are looking for, uh, for, you know, like.
I know.
I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't, somebody go through a pending insurance.
Okay. I'm already at school.
I'm trying to figure this out, the car might approach, let's just do that.
And I have people to play the automatic speed.
I'll bet my shit.
So when this is all done, we're going to have to do an educational campaign to get everybody to realize, yes, it's fun to take the S curve on Woodcrest. That is kind of a fun curve now, but, uh, you know, doing it at 40 isn't the game plan, you know? Uh, so anyway, we'll, we'll cross that bridge if we come to it, but that, uh, that day's coming. Okay, um, next up we have discussion of the animal control ordinance. So this is Serena and, uh, and like, what do you?
That's me. Um, I, I have to say about a year ago, uh, I brought it up to talk to you guys about having backyard chickens here in town. Uh, you guys all seemed open for it, so I wanted to bring it up again, uh, because before, you know, you move out of the ordinance before you do all that work or change wording and stuff, you want to know, you know, that towns have a more with you guys, with me. Um, also I wanted to, you guys, you know, I know some of you who have been boisterous about certain things. If we allow backyard chickens, certain things you do or don't want. So I wanted to open that discussion up, um, if you're on board with me moving forward with, uh, changing the ordinance and wording and if you guys have, uh, any recommendations on things that you would like to see in it.
Well, I mean, I mean, my, so my opinion is that, uh, it's not devil's life, but the devil's in the details.
Yeah.
So obviously I care about aesthetics, um, you know, I, I want screening. I, I just need to see a lot of corals.
You know, I didn't need to do that.
I need to be heavily restricted. That's why I need to, to get me.
Especially over here because we have the smaller lots, you know, when you have three acres, it's less of an impact on your neighbors. But over here, you know, if somebody's going to let them run wild, you're, you know.
So I think, you know, the, I looked at the legislature, they, they had it built two years ago.
2018.
But there, there's no one issue. I think they're worried about things like electricity and coagulants, you know? I don't know, I can discuss.
I think there's a big push for it, so too now, especially, uh, you know, there's a big push for supplying food source and health and stuff like this. I think eventually it will be back in. Uh, I think it would be good for the town to get ahead of it for restrictions. I know New Boy's some and, uh, Eric and Derry, you know, there's things like, you don't want roosters, you don't want things that have noise. And I think Louis, Linda has said me, Louisville, and I have read other towns, and there are certain towns that are real lax with it. And there are other towns that are here on the parameters and they are very detailed. And I'm good with doing the details. Um, I just wanted to, you know.
I think that'd be helpful. I think a survey kind of what's the way of the land out there, I, I'd say that'd be helpful so that we're not reinventing rules.
Yeah, because I don't.
I take what other people are doing.
I'm not really sure exactly what the, what you do to keep it from being offensive to your neighbors. I'm not sure how you do that. I get, you know, you can have pens or whatever.
Well, they're not only, um, they're chicken coops. So people, where, I mean, some people are doing free range, but I, I don't want to say in a town like this, we don't live on a ranch or a farm. You know, they would be in chicken coops.
So they're always.
They're always out, they're always in chicken. There is no free range. Or, uh, the mayor can talk about before, I don't want to see anything in the front yard. You know, you can even, you can limit the number, you, you know, you can, uh, you do inspection. The coop has to be this size. You can't have it in the front yard. It has to be so far from your neighbor's yard.